I don't mind seeing you because it looks very interesting.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I looked this morning and I should have refreshed me.
5:57.
I administered at church a couple weeks ago, so I had to fly. Some people were...
Yeah.
Just kids.
I did that, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I was thinking of that.
Oh, man.
Thank you. Show me the main flyer for the regional. We're back. That's what we came.
What, online?
Yeah.
I thought about having someone take it to all the downtown businesses and just print it off and just say...
I'll print it off some and go to church.
Like, give the joy or something.
Yeah, one of our offices, just the regional. Yeah. And then you'd be sticking with the mine utilities or...
No, I didn't talk to utilities. I think they're still getting a little attention.
You mean, except the big ones?
No. No. I haven't been, I don't look at any of them. Since I said that, I'm like, oh, you look at mine. I can relate.
Hello. 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 This is the top. I don't do the new virtual version. And... Hello. Uh, no. Yeah. I'm sure you have some area. I think so. How are you? You. I didn't even, I always enter your... I already told you.
It's where the first came out.
Yeah. Move on. I'm a little... I'm good. So, it's really good. All right. There's one now. Let's believe them. It's in this room.
Oh. Yeah. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
All right. Here's one now. Let's believe them. It's in this room.
Yeah. Oh. Yeah. All right. 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 Yeah. So, if that guy from Iowa can get the file, why am I without... He called me and it's like... He's going here. You don't know him yet?
Yeah. What can we do? At least it shouldn't be on the...
I would hurt my...
It's part of that time change. You really have to...
I'd like to bring your jersey and take the... Yeah, I am too. I'm busy. I just don't think they're doing more. It's like, you know, outside.
We were talking today. She stopped. She told the board.
I've heard. I've heard. And I... Is it really? Thank you.
Yes. I was just looking at you. It was just like... Oh, it's gonna be great. Some are just here in terms of...
Probably not.
...terms of everything.
So, you were just touching on it. Yeah. 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 Is that ridiculous?
I found some pictures. I see them.
I hadn't. We hadn't discussed it.
I have some pictures. Call. Got a little taxidermy. How was it? We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. We're gonna start off with an invocation. Thanks to Ken and Smith with Hope Community Church, but I also wanted to recognize Mr. Shank, who we lost recently. I've attended almost every one of our public meetings and just was a wealth of knowledge to our community with his blog, and I certainly want to recognize him and remember him for all he did for our city. So, Ken, I'll turn it over to you.
Let's be thankful for each one that is here, but also remember and with great Thanksgiving for Mr. Shank with just a moment of silence before we begin tonight. Father in heaven, we thank you for a beautiful day that you have given us here in Rensselaer, for all the good things that you've allowed to be accomplished today, for those who are gathered here tonight to do business for our city and we make wise decisions. May things be said in the way they need to be said and only what needs to be said. We again thank you for Mr. Shank and what he meant to our community and ask your blessings on his family. Watch over our council people and our mayor as they lead us for all that serve us here in Rensselaer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My beloved allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna start with a roll call.
Mayor Jeff Helix.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Shelby Eas, here. Council members Russ Overton.
Here.
Kevin Arnold.
Absent.
Noah Weiser.
Here.
Jeff Rehber.
Here.
And Ernest Watson, Jr.
Here.
City Attorney Todd Sammons.
Here.
Building Commissioner Josh Davis.
Here.
Cemetery Caretaker Joe Effinger.
Here.
Fire Chief Kenny Hahn.
Here.
Police Sergeant John Davis.
Here.
Utility Office Manager Heather Smart.
Here.
Lead Line Foreman Garrett Walter.
Here.
Park Superintendent Heather Hall.
Here.
Street Water Sewer Sanitation Superintendent Bryce Black.
Here.
Gas Superintendent Todd Wilson.
Here.
And Assistant Superintendent Josh Eldridge.
Here. Thank you. Again, Ken and I wanted to say thanks. I didn't know when you were gonna leave, but thank you so much for that. We'll start, council, with the minutes of the last meeting you provided in an email. How do you want to act on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes represented.
Soon. There's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes not represented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This is a time in our agenda for citizens' comments. If there is anyone that wants to be heard by the city council, now would be the time to come forward and do so. Okay. Hearing night, I'd ask the council if we could close our regular meeting and open up a public hearing for the replacement of preliminary engineering report, for our lead line service. Sorry.
I'll make a motion to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing.
It's been a motion and a second to close the regular hearing and open up the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I didn't ask if it was gonna be Ryan or Andrew, but...
Yes.
It was geared up.
All right. I do have a couple of things first I gotta hand out. Pass a round. If anyone else wants one, you're welcome to. And then there's also, we have a sign-in sheet by the, on the table. If you could sign in on your way out, if you haven't already. So, this is public hearing to meet SRF requirements on our lead service line replacements preliminary engineering report. A little background, a little history. 2021, the U.S. EPA passed a regulation to require all municipalities to complete a lead service line inventory, that's basically document the material type of every service line in the municipality. The city has largely completed this themselves, and in 2024, the city received a grant to complete this PER, and basically it's looking at the objective to replace all lead service lines within the next 10 years. That's the EPA standard, and this PER looks at how to replace all lead or galvanized required replacement services in, in the city. So, with that objective in mind, based off of the inventory that was completed, we organized all the service lines into different priorities. So, from highest priority to lowest priority, every service line varies on material type and, you know, what is known and what is unknown. So, you know, on the highest priority, these are services we know are lead or galvanized. Down to lowest priority, services that we know are not, and then, you know, unknowns are, are in there in high priority and medium priority. So, based off of those prioritizations, we created different alternatives to look at. Alternative one, there's no action, doesn't meet EPA standard, so it wasn't considered. Alternative two, replace line, service lines in the highest high and medium priority groups. Alternative three, highest and high priority groups. Alternative four, just the highest priority group, and then alternative five, replace only the service lines that are in state roads, so in 114 and 231, in the highest priority group. In discussion with, with the city, the city does plan on self-performing a lot of these service line replacements. They purchase materials to do so, and so the recommended alternative is only the service lines in that alternative five, which is only in the state roads. Those being the ones that are more challenging, require an additional permitting, a little more challenging for the, for the city to self-perform. So, that's how we got to that as the recommended alternative. As far as the PER goes, we did look at environmental impacts. So, you'll see here I list soils, farmland, floodway, air quality, plants and animals, archaeological sites. All those things were looked at and considered in the PER. Of course, with service lines, they are, you know, already in place. This is a replacement of existing service lines, so it's already disturbed land, so we did not conclude any serious environmental impacts beyond temporary construction disturbance, noise, things of that nature. Project cost, so this recommended alternative does include, let's see, 51 service lines. So, our estimated project cost, this includes the actual replacement itself, non-construction and contingency costs, $1,051,875. That's the full recommended project cost price. As far as schedule goes, we outlined a, a basic preliminary schedule based off of SRF's typical timeline. So, that is this PER and the SRF application that will follow, get submitted this month, March 31st is the deadline for submissions for this year. Typically, in July of that same year, we hear back and get scored against other projects in the state of Indiana that have been submitted, and then that's, at that point, the city would have a, some sort of financial package from SRF to consider, can decide to move forward or not. But then based off of that schedule, we have authorizing design and closing on interim financing in July, jumping forward to advertising for construction in January, receiving construction bids in February, and then closing with SRF in March. And then the intent would, would be that the, the project actually takes place throughout 2026. So, that is the high points of, of the PER. I'd love to answer any questions if you have any. If there are or aren't, but after questions, we would, we have the two resolutions, the PER acceptance resolution and the signatory authorization resolution, and then if, if you're welcome to sign the permit, the, the actual SRF application as well, which we have.
All right. Are there any questions for Ryan with Commonwealth Engineering on the lead service lines, council?
Are these primarily residences?
Yes. Yeah, there are some businesses as well. This does not differentiate between them, but most of them are residences.
Can you say it's gonna be most of the work? A lot of it?
Outside of this project, yes. There's more than the 51 in the recommended alternative that are lead or, are galvanized, but this narrows it down to just the ones the city wouldn't do.
I don't know. I don't have a question. I made the most of it. I don't have a question.
Ask the question.
Are we getting multiple bids or is it...
Uh, this will be bid at some point down the road.
Correct. Yeah, this is just the preliminary engineering report. Once you go through design, that's when bidding, bidding would be, so that, according to this schedule, which of course is preliminary, would be January, February of '26.
Yeah. Get lumber with $1 million. How much?
20K. 20K for the...
Yeah, typically, when, when we look at these, we estimate about 50, 15,000 per, per service line. Now, that varies, of course, because some are, you know, longer than others, some are in the road, the water mains in the road, some are outside of the road. You know, you really don't, can't narrow down your, your cost estimate until you're actually in design and look at each, each one, but quite frankly, a lot of the projects we've done lately that do include service lines, that's a pretty accurate price. But, yeah, you, you certainly refine that. That's just a planning level cost estimate. You certainly refine that as you get through design and get, get to bidding, of course.
Does that include repairing the roads?
Yes. Any, any surface restoration that's disturbed, it includes, includes everything. Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing night, council, if you'd like to close the hearing, the public hearing and open a regular meeting?
Open it up to a public comment.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Now, is there any public comment? Yes, sir.
See, I have a comment.
Yes.
What residents are being affected, do you know?
114 or 231?
Yeah, this, this, so at this point, it's, it's just, a report has been written, so nothing's actually designed, but as far as the list of services that are included, that 51 services, they're just the ones that are known to have ladder galvanized water services and are located along state road 114 or US 231.
And these residents probably have already received a letter in the mail, would be my guess.
And, and if you have a question on a specific one, I, I could certainly take an address down and let you know personally afterwards. We do have, you know, an actual list of them.
Thank you. Council, would you like to close the public hearing and open your regular hearing, your regular meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
Okay. All right. All those in favor for closing the public hearing and open your regular meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? All right. We'll get into our agenda at this point. Pat, you're up.
Hi.
How we doing?
I'm good. I'm Pat Fox. I help with Little Cousin Jasper Festival.
I'm Tim Shide of Braden.
Tasha Murray.
These people are our newest little helpers. They joined a few days before the festival last year. We threw them a T-shirt and they've been running ever since.
Do they know what they're getting into?
They didn't.
We know now.
They know now. They did know now. Good help. This is really, really early schedule. Things will change. We would like to ask permission to have Little Cousin Jasper, Potawatomi, possibly Iroquois. Well, last year, the Iroquois worked out really good with the parking and, and all that. It was really good, and have that road closed, that worked out well, and possibly Filson, if we can figure out.
So, besides the one road that you closed last year, is there, when you talk about Filson, are you trying to close any of those roads over there, too?
We, we usually close front because of the parade, and if we have something at Filson, people are going back and forth, and people are going back and forth anyway. The food is, of course, is all in the parking lot, so we, we will close, ask to close front also, yes.
Not Kelner.
Maybe we'll close Kelner on Sunday, isn't it? Because you're having a car show.
Yeah, we're not gonna have a car show on Sunday. Posi-, let's, let's say possibly Kelner.
Okay. All right.
And things change a lot.
And we talked about giving power to the inside of the circle for safety.
Oh, yeah, that was a really great idea.
I'm not sure where, you know, where we're at. We were talking about trying to get power to inside of that circle and Potawatomi Park to make it a little easier for you guys to make a run. You know, if those are still in the plans for that, or...
I, we can look at that.
Look at it.
If we need to, but...
Last year, we ran a drop cord or the cord across...
Yeah, cord, it got tripped over, even though it had a safety barrier over the top of it.
Yeah, we put a safety barrier.
Yellow safety barrier, still was getting tripped over. So, yeah, that was something that we talked about. We'll get, we'll get with Garrett and see if that's a possibility.
Electric in the middle would be fabulous.
Anything else? Good question.
So, you're, are you, so just to clarify, Pat, so you're requesting to use the parking lot and then Iroquois Park?
Potawatomi Park.
And Iroquois Park for parking, or will you have booths over there, too?
No, there won't be any booths.
Okay, so possible parking.
Parking, it worked, it worked really well last year for parking.
Okay, and then Filson Park for...
Filson Park for question mark? I'm not real sure. We'd love to put something there because it's a wonderful little park. None of the vendors want to be there, they want to be on the circle, so it would be an event that we'd have in Filson if we did something like a car show, but the car show did not go well, so...
And what streets? Just front?
Front and...
College.
And college, okay, I was thinking college.
Closing college avenue for...
Uh, we're gonna use the parking in Iroquois Park, so we close college street so people can walk back and forth safely.
Close it for the whole weekend?
Uh, yeah. Again, it'll be one of those things, we'll have to see what type of crowding we're having and whether or not we need to move one place or another, but possibility, the way you were describing, so I would think Saturday around pre-teen time, we probably wanna do something like that.
All right. These are all possibilities right now, except for, well, Filson is a possibility.
Filson is a possibility, for sure. The food court in the parking lot, for sure. The vendors in Potawatomi, and for sure, parking in Iroquois. That just works so well.
It did work. So, I make the motion to allow Little Cousin Jasper in those areas.
All right, you got a motion and a second to allow Little Cousin Jasper, the areas of Potawatomi Park.
I just want to mention, I don't think it'll be an issue. I'm hoping that CCMG will be done by then, but college from the bridge to Jackson, I just wanted to get it out there just in case. I'm hoping it's done, but...
I'm confident it will be.
It's worth it.
Me, too. Well, we're gonna start May, hope it better. Let's hope.
Yeah.
All right.
So, do we need to, making that motion about the road closure as well, or just with the park about the festival?
I think we, if we go ahead and say we're given permission to close that road, if things change, we can always change it, so... So, the motion was to use the parking lot on Front Street, close Front Street for a limited time, possibility closing College Avenue for a limited amount of time, using Iroquois Park and possibly Filson Park, and a possibility to closing a little bit of Kelner Avenue. Did I get it correct, council? Did I get it correct, Pat?
Yeah.
Probably want to mention the dates, Mary.
Thank you. It'll be September 5th through the 7th.
Right.
Thank you.
And we start moving in on Monday, so we are there. Okay.
All right. For the festival, so we already have a motion out there for this, or...
I think I missed my motion.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
See you in September.
One thing I did want to mention, we always have trouble with the chiropractor's office.
I'll take care of that.
Okay. Okay, very good. And one more thing, couple more things.
Okay.
Somebody made me aware that there is a time capsule buried at the VFW that was done during Little Cousin Jasper, and it was buried in two, year 2000, to be dug up 25 years later. And I have not researched this, but we're gonna find out about that time capsule. We're supposed to dig it up in 25.
Well, it's changing 25 years.
Yes. Be interesting if we... Pardon?
You have any idea where it's at?
No.
Just went to...
I thought maybe somebody would. Oh, I remembered that.
Yeah.
Oh, somebody, one of the little kings or one of the little queens come to me at one of the events we had and said, "Did you know?" And I said... Little Cousin Jasper and it was buried in year 2000 to be dug up 25 years later. And I have not researched this, but we're going to find out about that time capsule. We're supposed to dig it up in 25.
Well, it's changing 25 years.
Yes. Be interesting if we, pardon?
You have any idea where it's at?
No. I thought maybe somebody would. Oh, I remembered that.
Yeah.
Somebody, one of the little kings or one of the little queens come to me at one of the events we had and said, "Did you know?" And I said, "No." Maybe I haven't checked with, maybe the VFW knows something. It's supposed to be by the VFW, but that would be one thing that we want to get done this year. Okay, we're wanting to have a new event.
Okay.
We are wanting to have a fishing derby using, using the river and Brad has.
Being the new member of Little Cousin Jasper, we had to pick out ideas and one of the ideas my wife and I came up with was a fishing derby. Little Cousin Jasper, you know, he's got his fishing pole and all that, so it's kind of an easy idea with the river being right there. We're thinking from the bridge at Mount Hood to the walking bridge at Potawatomi along that service road. I've talked with DNR, I got their permission, got the application. I have a contact with DNR, so it is possible through them. I have not filled out the application yet. First wanted to get permission from the city and the Parks Department before we fill out the application. I have some volunteers who are also going to assist with this. It's going to take a lot of people to do this, so I've already got a few volunteers that will assist, so just, I have a plan written up. It needs to be honed out a little bit. Once we get permission and it's a go, we'll be working.
There an age limit?
That's something the committee was going to discuss, if we're going to have an age limit, if we're going to have two separate, you know, open to all or just for children. See how it goes.
Well, let's get the permit done and I think obviously you want permission from the council to go ahead and apply for the permit with DNR. Counsel, how do you feel?
Any safety concerns?
Do you guys have an insurance or anything? That's my first thought.
Other questions?
I didn't quite hear what, do we have a state insurance? I'm sure that Stace will cover us. He usually comes through.
Spring break.
Oh, spring break.
Spring break.
We give permission pending insurance and a DNR application that's approved.
And we did, I did run it by Heather, the Parks Department, and she said it was okay.
Okay. That's only a motion from one of our council people?
I'll make the motion. Pending insurance.
And DNR approval. All right. So who made the motion, Russ? Justice Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Let's go fishing.
Okay. We'll do it. One more thing.
All right.
Well, I got you.
Yeah, well, we got you.
You have said that you are hesitant to donate to sponsor our scholarship this year and I understand the city of Rensselaer should be just the city of Rensselaer. So I come up with an alternative.
Okay.
So would you like to sponsor our tee shirts? And our tee shirt is on the back of the little thing that I gave you. Our theme this year is Be the Good. So the front will have us and the back will have a little B with Be the Good and if you do that for us, we'll put City of Rensselaer below that little B.
Bring it into my office some, one day this week and I'll take a look at it and get you an answer.
Okay.
All right. That one we can leave.
Okay.
All right.
That's the end of me.
All right, one more.
Yes.
With this now being in the park, organization for all the booths and the vendors was a little chaotic last year. If we had access to an architectural drawing of the park showing the pathways, the trees, the electrical, I'm not sure if that exists. I would imagine it would if it was built. Not sure how to obtain that if it does exist.
We'll do.
Otherwise, we have to recreate that to make a map.
We'll do our best to help you with that. There are some architectural stuff with the Park Department, but finding all of them and looking over others might be difficult for us to do, but.
She's going.
We can help find that stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Or tell us.
Tell us where to go or how to obtain.
We price it.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is P E R acceptance resolution and the, I don't know if we can do one motion, Andrew, if we're going to need two and the SRF signatory authorization to allow the mayor to sign that.
Mayor, you're welcome to take those as one unless Attorney Simmons would like them as two. I'm totally comfortable as them being one. They are related to the same project, so that would be fine.
I have a motion to do it one.
All right. Is that the motion?
I make a motion to let you sign and to accept the P E R acceptance.
Second. I have a motion and a second to accept the preliminary engineer report acceptance and resolution and allow for the mayor to sign such resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Off to a little better start now. Next, there's I-65 water and sewer gas improvements bid openings. We have four openings. We'll open those up, read them into there and pass them on to Amwell, Bryce, Lamy to review. Yes, sir?
Before we start opening, is there anybody here that has a bid to submit that they haven't submitted already? Okay, go ahead. I just wanted to check.
All right. I have four of them here. First one is Grimmer Construction out of 2619 Main Street, Highland, Indiana. Do you want to press it? It's probably going to shut it down. I do. Here, just a little bit. They all carry weapons. He's got it down.
Yeah, she's nervous.
Recognition of both addendum one and addendum two. Looks like one of them for him, right?
Yes, sir. Grimmer Construction, total base bid of $3,916,807.
Set that off to the side. Next bid is from Gatlin Plumbing and Heating from 111 East Main Street in Griffith, Indiana. Read the bid. I don't see that addendum shape, but we'll hand that to them. Next is Great X Inc., the address of 10220 North Illinois Street in Indianapolis. And last one is Atlas, Atlas Excavating Inc. out of 4740 Swisher Road, Building A in West Lafayette. Second page or something like that. There's the addendum recognition. We'll forward these to Bryce and it'll take it to our engineers, common engineering, and we'll get the most responsive and responsible bidders and we'll notify them.
Well, we would, yeah, we'd notify the bidders, the apparent results, but then we would bring a recommendation and bid tab to the next council meeting or Board of Works meeting, whichever you prefer.
Either way, I think Board of Works meeting is next. We typically do that one, so that would be April 10th, I think.
14.
14.
Bring it back to the 14.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next on our list is the CSO long-term plan, load monitoring and hydraulic model scoop. Oof, stoked. Model, the hydraulic model.
...the system and we record the rainfall that occurs and those temporary flow meters record the level and the flow in the pipes within the system. We do that for about two months time period. Basically, what we do is we try to catch a storm, if you will. We want a nice, good rainfall that's evenly dispersed over the city and we want a few of those. What that allows us to do is to simulate those same rainfall events in the hydraulic model. What we can do then is we can develop what's called a calibrated model. The calibration tool then allows us to compare a rainfall data set to what would be required of us to make sure that we have compliance. These models is what drives the recommendations related to the designs that we do for the long-term control plan. We have made as a city significant strides with respect to the long-term control plan and the projects that we've done. We've seen very positive results out of those projects with respect to the performance of the system. The model in this task order is intended to prove that out as it relates to the entire system so that we can basically check our progress, if you will, now that we're talking about Phase 2B and Phase 3. 2B is what, as you recall, is in design and Phase 3 is the remainder of the interceptor work that would be in design later this year, essentially. So this is the first step to starting that design is determining, is what we said back in the early 2000s that we thought was needed, is that still accurate or did our improvements perform better? We hope and we sure hope not worse than what we thought in the 2000s. So it gets us back to, you know, got a good measurement to start with before we start on Phase 3. So when we look at this, we are talking about doing some, several workshops. The workshops are going to be basically progress updates for the city as we go through the process. It's a very iterative process where we'll install those flow meters, we'll look at the data, we'll talk about the results of that data, what if we see, you know, does it look like this temporary flow metering data is saying there's a restriction or a clog or collapse or something else going on? We can see that in this data and we analyze it. We can, you know, that we can send a sewer cam out and take a look and see if there's something there. We'll also talk about the calibration. We'll talk about the alternatives that we'll run. Basically, it gives us an opportunity to reset things with, with the long-term control plan moving forward. In addition to that, we have the field work and the flow metering that we will do. That is time and cost associated with people physically entering the manholes, installing those flow meters and then for a period of two months maintaining those. That part is critical because good data in is good results out. If we don't have good data going in, the results that we get out aren't going to be as confident or as good. The locations for the flow meters, I believe we picked 15 different locations throughout the city for these flow meters and two rainfall gauges. Those were developed in coordination with Bryce as far as the locations based on the specific goals we want to accomplish with the modeling. And then, you know, finally, as a part of that, we'll have the actual hydraulic model that we'll put together in the update. That'll be shared, that'll be in a EPA SWIM format, which is open source, so you can open it and download it if you want, I suppose. The, in addition to that, we'll also update IDIM and the IFASRF with respect to the documents that we've put together for them. So we'll get an LDCP update out of this. And then finally, we will have, as a part of the project with the Melville work that we were doing, we did have some additional heavy sewer cleaning that occurred during the initial evaluation of that sewer. We asked that the contractor that did that work hold that so that we could put it in this, so we're asking that you authorize that as well. This work is intended to occur immediately upon authorization. The best time to do the flow meters is in the spring when we get a lot of rain historically. The amendment is, all of the different phases are listed as either lump sum or hourly depending on what they are. The total is 389894. That is significantly below the budget that we had in the P E R when we put the funding together. Would be happy to answer any questions you may have. The request is for approval to proceed with the installation of flow meters.
The only question I had, and maybe just to re-educate us, once we're completed with Phase 3 of the project, are we going to have to go back again and then monitor the same type of flow or?
It's likely that once we get through Phase 3, the government will ask us to monitor our CSOs and our rainfall and then we'll, basically what we'll be in is we'll be in a period of, are we in compliance? So every couple of years, they'll look at, how many overflows do we have at our combined sewer outfalls? What was the rainfall and did we achieve the compliance or did we not? And we'll have an opportunity to question the results or basically have a dialogue with them as to whether we feel that we have met or we have not and they will have an opportunity to provide a response as to whether they agree or disagree.
What comparisons would they use that one compared to what we're doing now?
That, what we would be doing then would be a much higher level. We're just talking about the overflows, not the system itself. So they're, they're only going to be worried about what the operator, certified operator submits as far as overflows that occurred and what the frequency was and the rain. And we can. and what the frequency was and the range. And we can prepare a response, basically, at that time. That's basically a monitoring period. This is, this is much more detailed than that effort and this will be, you're drilling down much deeper into the system and allocating flows to all the different basins throughout the city and determining where everything's coming from, what type of response it has to rainfall. It's very interesting and detailed niche work.
So these flow meters are going into where the manhole covers are at?
Pull the manhole cover. You have a tripod with usually is two steel cables and you send a man down there, confined space entry, to go down in and physically install the meters.
So you want to be doing?
I used to do it. I graduated.
And this is going to be, the cost is lower than what we had?
Well, we had allocated, so we're well within budget. Yes, sir.
What has to be done?
Yes.
Part of the, part of the?
Part of the project.
It is part of the long-term control plan in our agreements with IDIM. You are correct.
So that's expensive. I like that part. I'll make the motion that you pull in these flow, this flow plan in. Motion.
All fifteen?
Yep, all fifteen. Yes, sir.
You want to start that now, right?
We're going to start that just immediately as soon as we can. We'll get them in as, as soon as possible, basically to try to capture as much of the spring rains as we can. I'm guessing it's going to be within a week or two. All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the floor monitoring and the hydraulic model scope.
Second.
Second. By noel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations. Thank you, board. Next is the water plant, water treatment plant and the street department roof replacement consideration. Bryce, do you want to address that?
Thank you, Mayor. Both the water treatment plant and the street department roofs are showing signs of leaking and water damage. The water plant, we've got a few spots and that is a, it's currently a vinyl roof where it's coming around the soil stacks and the other curtains that stick up through that. The, we did that in the early 2000s and it came, or 2010 and it came with 15-year warranty. So we just eclipsed our warranty on that roof. We got two quotes for that. One to go back with the vinyl roof like they currently have with century roofing for $55,346 or to go back, clean it, do the necessary repairs and go over it with the silicone roof. And that is through Steve's specialized service. That comes with a 20-year manufacturer's warranty and that would be $32,205.
It's a 50-year warranty. On which one? On Steve's.
Product warranty, but if a 20-year warranty is if Steve and those guys went out of business, the manufacturer would stand behind that if it needed to be repaired.
So it's 50 on the product and 20 on the labor?
Yes.
Now, his, his quote didn't talk about venting that the century quote they talked about in the game? Does the silicone not need the same types of venting or is that?
Nope. It would just be, and they would send out a rep to inspect and it would just be directly applied right over top of everything that's there. No additional additions or just make sure the proper repairs are made and make sure it's cleaned properly before it's adhered to that existing roof. And then the street department roof, we noticed late last year, we had a hard drive in rain. We were getting rain coming in through one of the vents in the break room. Same thing, soil stacks had some tar put over them over the years. It's an existing steel roof and the nails are pulling away and there is no ridge vent. So the ridge is actually open. So this would be to remove that roof and come, go back in with a steel roof with a ridge vent and have it all screwed rather than nailed. Kittle Quality Roofing was the first bid at $19,900 and Trident True Builders was the second bid for the street department roof at $12,900.
Did you have these planned in your, when you were doing the budgeting and all that period of time? I don't know what, what the difference is as far as quality, the silicone versus the vinyl. So what do you, which one do you recommend?
It seems that the silicone, the manufacturer said that going over that silicone roof is no problem at all. The silicone tends, tends to expand and contract and that's where we're seeing those seams have issues and getting that water. Whereas the silicone is completely waterproof. It won't, it won't get no leaking or no expansion. It will expand and contract, but it won't go hard or anything like that.
So that's your recommendations, the silicone roof?
Yeah.
And that's the cheaper one and no longer warranty, right?
Correct.
Motion. Well, I'll make a motion to approve, let Bryce go ahead, go ahead with the roofing. I'll recommend, or I make a motion to recommend the silicone roof through Steve's specialized services for the wastewater treatment plant. And I don't know about the other one, but it, the Trident True was cheaper. So I would recommend that that bid for the other building.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the silicone roof from Steve's specialized services on the water treatment plant for $32,205. And for the street department building, is that correct, Bryce?
That's correct, Mayor.
For Trident True Builders for $12,900. Is there any further discussion?
Just one question. The Trident True says, specifically says site rep not included? No, they didn't say that and do you have any idea what they're talking about there?
I mean, there, there is no site rep to take place. It's just they're going to be in there and we'll just have to move vehicles out of the way and get them to.
All right. Anything further? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Start on the roofs. Next is Resolution 08, next 2025, transfer funds.
There was one request for transfer funds for the fire department and a total of $32.83.
I make the motion to approve that.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the transfer of funds. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is burial rights request.
One request for burial rights for Michelle and Matt Gunter in the 2002 edition of the Weston Cemetery for two spaces.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the burial rights request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next on the agenda is the credit card statement. Council, it was forwarded to you in an email. Are there any questions about the credit card statement?
I'll make a motion to approve having the mayor send the credit card statement.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to approve the credit card statement as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next is a FMLA request. Shelby?
We had one request submitted to my office for FMLA.
Motion.
Been a motion and a second to approve the FMLA request. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next will be our crane claims approval. Any questions, council?
I make the motion to accept the claims.
I did have one quick question, real quick. I'm sorry, before we say aye. There was a, there was a claim on there for 5,000 something. It was the housing study. That was HWC Engineering. It was spelled out. The name I didn't recognize. I'm assuming it's HWC.
I didn't recognize that.
Yeah, yeah. It's a different, yeah. You're correct on that. Yeah.
So that was for the housing study that we're doing?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Is that, was that the total or is that?
No, they're just, they're billing it.
They installed it. They started with the work. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Got a motion on the floor to approve the claims. There's a second. There's an and a second now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. I don't have any unfinished business or committee reports. Administrative comment side of things, we wanted to recognize Mr. Casibo somehow and Councilman Rayburn has volunteered to head that up for us. One of our graduates from Rensselaer High School won nationals in the high jump and then went off to China and got fourth in the world. So that we should probably recognize a little bit. So Jeff's going to head that up for us anyway that, that he can come here and I'll stop whatever I'm doing for it. Well, somebody else, somebody can do that. Well, I'll stop what I'm doing just to say hello to this guy.
He graduate with you?
Oh, yeah.
Just mom.
That was punk.
But other than that, the only thing I want the council to be aware of is we are going to start our leadership training for our superintendents here on April 24th. We'll have a Jazz Newton Foundation. So they're nice enough to host this, host it for us. And that's all I have. Shelby, do you have any?
I just want to echo the sentiments of Bob Shank. I think he was really a great asset to the city and the county and he will be very much.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
I have two things. One for Bob Shank. That was the hardest C I ever received when he was teaching. But he was, he did, he did open up a lot of ideas and we did cuss him a lot. But also Elm Street, you know, are we looking there Elm Street with all the, I don't know, I don't want to call their stuff garbage, but it just seemed like there's a lot of trash along there. And I just think the people who have their houses are done up nice and everything. And then you have, boom, their, their stuff is, you know, if I was living on that street, I would be saying something. So if we can look into it, that would be something that I would appreciate.
There's a grant that we kind of looked into that would help through OBR. The grants seem worth from $350,000 to $500,000 that would help people who can't necessarily afford bigger projects like roofing projects or ACNR projects that can be costly. I don't remember when the date is cut off on that grant.
They do quarterly applications though.
But it's been something that's been mentioned a number of times. So we kind of like to pursue that. There's also a house on Elm Street that we sent a letter to asking if they'd be willing to sell us that house. It needs knocked down. So we are paying some attention to what's going on in Elm Street and we'll continue to do so. But thank you for bringing that up.
You're very welcome.
Anything else? Mr. Rayburn?
Actually, I'd like to echo both of those sentiments. 136 West Clark, the, I talked to Crystal about it, but the camper that looks like it's something lived in.
Yeah, okay. Right, yeah, right. Got some bricks.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, with Bob Shank, I actually was wondering if we could take it a little bit further. I would like to propose that we do memorial sorts. Talked with superintendent Hall. First, they have the memorial gardens that we thought, the trees out by the hyper center. And then also, since Bob rode his bike to all these things, maybe we could do a bike rack in Felsen Park. Again, Heather had some ideas on that. And then I've heard kind of talk about when it's superintendent's time, but with the legacy subscription that she has and you can do QR codes on there. So you could do a QR code and would maybe talk about Bob a little bit and maybe even link to his blog, but still. Things I would like to propose.
Is that something you do our community relations?
We can, we can, we can find ways to do something like that. A bike rec did come up as a, a request for Felsen Park. I meant to get that to you at some point. The other thing was Mr. Shank is just to recognize that he was the 2024 Citizen of the Year for our community. So I think it's warranted that we do something a little more like a memorial that would, would help recognize someone like that that meant so much to our community. So thank you for talking with Heather on that. Anything we can do to help find some funding for that, let me know. Any else, sir? That's it. Thank you. All right. Well?
I think that's a great idea. So thank you for that. Just echoing everyone else's comments about that. He will be missed for sure. And a reminder for maybe just to let your friends and neighbors know about Reach Alert and if they haven't signed up, offer to help them do that if you can. We're getting, getting some people. We could use more of them.
Yeah. Hopefully some more messages will come out where people will start to spurs and grow up there. But thank you for everybody who's helped trying to get that out there. Mr. Robertson?
I guess I'll give myself a pre-smit. She wrote it up, so I mean, I have signed up, by the way.
Thank you. It's so easy, the American, yeah, that's what we're saying. So, okay. We'll start with superintendent's reports. Sergeant Davis, you're first up to game.
Yeah. I have anything.
Notice I said Sergeant Davis, not your person. I appreciate that, Mayor. Attorney Sammons?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Heather?
Earlier this year, we received approval for destruction of records and I just want to thank the departments that assisted earlier today in moving those records out of City Hall and over to the county building to be shredded on Wednesday. So thank you. I appreciate it.
I want to say thank you also for giving the financial information to IMBO that they're looking for in their annual report. So I appreciate your office getting that done in a timely manner. So thank you so much. All right. Josh Davis. Notice how that works?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two things. First off, we have a meeting on the 7th next month at 5:00 PM. We should have a few things on the agenda there. And then just one of the, from the council, we did have a planning commission meeting last week and one of the major things we're discussing is expanding the size of the buffer zone, especially in relation to the west of I-65. So we're going to start that process. It'll take a few months here, but next month will be the first step is amending the comprehensive plan. So we're passing a resolution to do that. So I'll keep you informed of the progress.
Any questions for Josh? All right. Chief Hahn?
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a leadership program coming 4th and 5th from an instructor that retired from Chicago. He's now currently in Lewisville, Texas. Again, that'd be April 4th and 5th. And then I've got several guys going down to Indianapolis the week of the 7th through the 12th, attending conferences and international fire committee, convention stuff. So other than that, go with Trump.
Questions for Chief Hahn? Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had an employee pass his schooling for his second year apprenticeship. So now he is on to his third year.
Done. Tell him congratulations. Or you better all run down there and say hello to him.
Sounds good, Mayor.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Bryce, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. The Melville sewer repairs began this morning. Hopefully that continues to move along smoothly. And we also started laying things out and we'll be breaking ground on the Amtrak drainage tomorrow morning. Which we are going to be here Wednesday morning to core into the manhole and install a boot and we'll be able to take off from there. So we should start seeing pipe in the ground by mid-morning Wednesday. And then two weeks ago, our wastewater and water treatment firm, Mr. Ritter, was recognized that
at the Alliance Spring Conference, he was awarded the Apprentice of the Year for the city Rensselaer. He'll be awarded with that, and there'll probably be a newsletter come out behind that, but very proud of the strides he's taken in the short amount of time he's been here. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I know I said congratulations to Ryan when I was out there, but he took the time to actually educate the mayor on the flow for the wastewater treatment facility, which I highly recommend everybody go take that one. It was only, it was after the engineering on the news side of things, I'm like, okay, let's go back and look at the whole one. But Ryan did a fantastic job, very professional, and we're very lucky to have someone like that work for the city. I can pass that on for us if you would, Bryce?
Yes, sir.
Well, appreciate it. Josh, you're up next.
All I have is April 12th is Electronic Spring, Electronic Day. We do this every spring with Chesapeake County RMC. This year, we are going to have our drop-off, or drop-off location at the gas department, where everything's going down. It's usually from 8:00 to noon. Secondly, I'm assuming we got some good news from IDIM today, I didn't get a reading mail.
Okay, yeah, they approved the recycling grant, sent it for me to sign it through DocuSign, and sent it right, back right away, so hopefully we'll get the completed one from there, and they'll send some money our way. So congratulations on preparing that grant and receiving that grant. It should make our downtown look a little nicer. Thank you. Any questions for Josh?
How do you get to work? How do you get to work?
A couple different ways.
Hopefully, we'll fix that soon. Heather Hall is up next.
Thank you, Mayor. So today, a new roof went on Gifford Shelter at Brookside Park. It matches storage shelter now with the tan and then the green roof. When I was out at Brookside Park this afternoon, they were stripping the shingles off of the roof poolhouse, so hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have a new metal roof on that poolhouse. My crew has been painting inside the poolhouse over the past few days, so our goal is to have that finished very soon for the public. They've also painted the exterior and interior at Columbia Park, the restrooms. They also installed new doors over there. Later this week, we plan to take down the garage at Foundation Park. A new employee started today, she's hit the ground running with many things. You're going to, I think, be wowed by the things she'll do in the park when it comes to beautification, landscaping, and also helping to expand our digital presence of the Parks Department. And I'm going to be finishing up two grants this week to try to secure some more funding for some of our projects.
Any questions for Heather? Todd, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, we have a guy come from USDI to get a certified every year to put plastic pipe together. Guys, we'll all do that. And then we've got multiple lines that we're working on this week to get in for customers and for new housing and for businesses. And we moved a line for the new cookie shop that is going uptown for that, on that too. Over there by where next C is.
Where the drive-through window. To a cookie shop, that's what I need. Well, thank you for doing that. Anything, any questions for Todd? Joe, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing for the council. We've been busy working outside on these nice days, fixing some of the graves that we had had to bury people throughout the winter. Stuff has started to settle, so we're finishing all that stuff up as well. We'll be working on the roadways, trying to get some of that over on the north end, taking care of as well.
Do you want to have anything else that needs to come before the council?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There have been a motion and a second to adjourn the council meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.